Jason, are you outside?
Yeah, we went to that last year.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Addison Central School District Board.
Recording in progress.
I'll start that again. Good evening. I would like to call the Addison Central School District Board meeting to order. It is 6:30. I would like to start with introductions. And I'll start with Jason.
Jason, Jess.
Mary Heather Novak.
Jess Venable Novak.
Tricia Allen.
Steve Orzek.
Laura Harthan.
Wendy Baker.
Suzanne Buck.
Nava Glickman.
Jamie O'Callaghan.
Eleanor Stack.
Sonya Easlin.
Ali Clazo.
Courtney Cron.
Great, thank you. Moving on, I would like to have a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Move that we adopt the agenda as warned.
Second.
There's been a motion to move the agenda as warned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's passed. We now are in our first public comment period. This is a period of time where the board hears what there may be of concerns or thoughts of our community. We do not hear concerns around personnel issues, and this is not a time for back and forth with the board. Do we have any public in the room that would wish to make a comment? I see no hands. Jason, is there anybody online?
Two attendees on Zoom. No one with their Zoom handbooks.
Thank you. We will... I'll go first, Steve. Steve wants your settle. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yep. Steve Catch.
Well done. Now, I'd like to move on to a recommendation to approve the minutes of August 11th and August 14th.
Move that we approve the minutes of August 11th and August 14th as submitted in the packet.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August 11th and August 14th as they were submitted in our packet. Is there any discussion? Any corrections?
I do have one. I was looking over them again today, and I cannot remember. I don't have Emily Brock as March present for the board retreat, but I thought she might have been there, but then I was starting to second guess myself, too. No?
No.
Okay, all right, then they're good as is.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Seeing and hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor approving the minutes of August 11th and August 14th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So noted. Jess has abstained.
And Jamie.
And Jamie.
Oh, sorry, Jamie. Didn't see your hand on it. My apologies. Motion's passed. Ron, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Ron McQuaid.
Thank you.
ACSD Board. Thanks, Suzanne.
I just want everyone to feel like they were. Jason, approve the ACSD bills.
Yep. Suzanne and I read bills on the 18th. There were three warrants. One general warrant dated August 15th for $671,000. Two payroll warrants, one dated July 23rd for $334,000, and one dated August 5th for $306,900. Didn't have any questions or concerns that weren't being answered, so I move that we approve the bills as reviewed.
Do I have a second for that, please? Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Laura, seconded. Then moved and seconded to approve the paying of the ACSC bills as read by Jason. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's passed. Dr. Baker, reporter superintendent.
Thank you. First action is personnel appointments and resignations, per usual. We have some new staff joining us as support staff, and then there's one that I want to particularly point out to you as it represents an important direction. Jennifer Armstrong is here to be appointed as an extended day supervisor at Point 2. That is evidence of our work in providing an after-school opportunity at Salisbury Community School that preferences students who are coming from Ripton. You might remember that students from Ripton were able to have time after school previously because of the second bus that came around, and so there was a little bit of an opportunity for parents to have an extended day coverage. And so we have worked to try to recreate that, and we're on our way at Salisbury. The preference will be given to Ripton students, and then Salisbury students can come in after that. Tracy Harrington, the principal at Salisbury, is going to be keeping an eye on where we are and just looking at this as potentially, you know, a model. There will be bus transportation back up, you know, at the end of that time period, and so we're working that out, and we'll have more information as we begin the year about how that's going. So that's something that's just a little bit different, but they are otherwise presented for your approval.
Yeah, I have a motion to accept the personnel appointments and personnel appointments.
I move that we accept the personnel appointments as presented in our agenda.
Second.
Are there any comments or concerns?
I'm excited. Yes. I was gonna say, I'm excited about that new position, so it's nice to hear about it. Thank you.
Could I ask where this puts us in relation to how many openings we have yet to fill, or how many more people will see coming in?
I would not want to guess as to how many more people we would see coming in. I would really love to see our special education positions filled, so we have some of those listed. Gail's probably refreshed our jobs. You know, she does that every day, so I haven't seen what's come off today and come on tomorrow. They're on our website, and those are generally current. So we have SLP and special education openings. You know, still, we have some paraprofessional openings. Generally speaking, we're in good shape. We're now putting forth positions that, like, if we can't fill a special ed position, you see an admin assistant position there to think about a different way of providing more support in case management, to redirect special educators toward direct service. So we're now trying to find, you know, other ways to try to get to the same place. So depending on where we are in the next board meeting, I may have some different things for you to approve that try to help us to move forward in ways that we haven't in the past, because, you know, we've tried to fill these positions now for a number of years running, and so we've got to kind of think about doing it a little differently. But generally speaking, we feel well-staffed, you know, in order to be able to open well.
So there's a perennial gap at Mary Hogan, like, with paraprofessionals. They always seem to be short over there.
Yeah, they're short. I think two and a half right now. You know, there's a possibility that that may ameliorate. And it's also the other thing that happens this time of year is students move around, you know, so we need to make sure that everybody's settled, you know, and then we have a better sense of just exactly what we need for staffing, particularly in student support.
Thank you.
We'll keep it on the radar as things to talk about.
Are there any other comments, questions, concerns around staffing levels and appointments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion to approve the personnel appointments as noted and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Ellen, once we're done voting, I'd like you to introduce yourself for everyone, please. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Laura abstained, and Steve has abstained. Ellen, can you introduce yourself for everyone online, please?
Ellen Wheeland-Wiest.
Thank you. Welcome.
So the second item we have is selecting and approving the fuel bid, and I think Matt has included some of the new materials that we could walk you through.
I threw it last. It's down here somewhere.
Page 50. The fuel bid information was at the very end of your packet. There's like this, two pages worth of information.
We kick off the school year with fuel bid.
That's right, yep.
So the fuel bid is a sort of a historic bid that's come to the board because we used to buy fuel, sort of, in one big purchase, and that rose above the micro-purchase threshold. It's now many small purchases, so we still go out to bid to show competition, but it's not a legally mandated bid process. With that said, this year's bid process came back with one bid for fuel oil and two bids for propane. Champlain Valley Fuels was our only oil bidder at $2.65. And then Files, who's been our perennial supplier of propane, came in at $1.53 for propane, and Suburban Propane came in at $1.54. So with those prices in mind, we recommend the motion to award the fuel oil bid for 2025-26 to Champlain Valley Fuels at a fixed-price rate of $2.65. And the propane bid for 2025-26 to Files Brothers at a fixed-price rate of $1.53. If anybody was interested in the history of fuel oil prices, there's two years of history on the second page.
It's interesting.
So you can see some of the more recent trends.
So may I have a motion from the board to award the fuel to Champlain Valley and propane to Files, please?
I vote that we award the fuel oil bid for 25-26 to Champlain Valley Fuels at a fixed-price rate of $2.65, and the propane bid for 25-26 to Files Brothers at a fixed-price rate of $1.53.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, concerns, questions? Seeing no hands. Oh, Steve.
I am just curious, Matt, looking at oil in '24, it looks like the fixed price was noticeably higher. So is that something we're spending less on this year? Is that kind of a bright spot, if I understand it?
No, the fixed price, it's not gas. It's not tied to our usage. It's tied to the import price for that heating oil that they're paying. I think it all comes in through Eastern Quebec somewhere.
All right, so in terms of fuel oil, we're not saving money this year versus other years?
In the sense that, you know, we always fill up all of our tanks every year to do anything. All of our buildings will get fuel-oiled this year, and, you know, I think if there's any savings because of low usage this year, it will be realized next year's purchase.
All right. Yeah, just trying to understand, on that second page, that historical bid results.
Yeah, that's like the price that you pay at the pump historically for gas for the last three years.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Matt? Seeing no hands raised, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of awarding the fuel oil bid for 25-26 to Champlain Valley Fuels at a fixed price of $2.65 per gallon, and the propane bid for 25-26 to Files Brothers at also a fixed price of $1.53. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's passed.
So before we get to the legislative update, we've had a good, strong opening. All of the adults that support our students arrived to work and filed into the high school gym on Wednesday morning, and it was great to see so many board members who were just able to come out. It's a nice opportunity to be together. We had a couple of speakers, and one of which was Nava, actually. So Nava Glickman and Taryn Burns gave sort of a message, you know, on behalf of the students, things that it was important for the adults to remember on day one of 187 for them, you know, the hope being that day 187, they can still hear those words. So I would be happy to pass some of my superintendent's report on to Nava, should she have anything she'd like to share.
Oh, sure. Just like, you know, classic student report stuff. Okay, cool. So yeah, obviously, school hasn't started yet, but for our ninth graders, it is tomorrow. It's their orientation move-up day, which is pretty nerve-wracking for them a lot of the time. I remember this school was massive to me, and I was so, like, lost on my first day. So it's our, so the peer leaders run the orientation day. So today, all the peer leaders gathered this morning, and we are in, like, different groups, and we plan different activities and made signs and stuff. So tomorrow, the ninth graders are going to arrive on buses or dropped off in the cars in the morning. They're going to file into the gym. They're going to basically go through their schedule, but their classes are going to be only, like, five minutes, so they're going to get their bearings a little bit, and then they're going to regroup in their advisories where the peer leaders, who spend the first quarter of the school year, hanging out with them in their advisories, helping lead them, kind of just guide them through this transition. So we're going to do different, like, kind of just activities to get them adjusted and help them feel supported at the school. So that's exciting, and I think it's just cool because every time there's, like, a new grade that comes in, it's like this opportunity to, like, reiterate, like, the positive environment that is supposed to be MUHS and that, you know, we're trying to foster here. So it's another opportunity. So yeah, that's what's going on tomorrow, and then obviously, school starts Wednesday, and things are going.
And then it's a run.
Yeah. It'll be good. But yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Nava? Steve?
Well, I just wanted to comment that you both did a wonderful job, and I know it's not hard, or I know it's hard to stand in front of a whole bunch of adults, let alone your teachers, to speak as eloquently and as well as you did. So congratulations. I'm very good.
Thank you.
Jason?
I'm curious what the sentiment is about the new cell phone policy.
So they, my understanding was that they didn't have their phones either at the middle school. I think this is true, yeah.
Yes.
And so I think it's kind of an okay adjustment for them, and if anything, I think it might feel like there's more freedom here in the sense that, like, not, like, moving away from the phones, but like, there's so many other opportunities that you get at the high school that you don't get at the middle school. So I think that, like, excitement and stuff is still, like, there, even when it's like, oh, yeah, like, you don't get your phone. But I think they're kind of used to it. And to be honest, I mean, personally, and the people that I've talked to, I think that initial, like, blow of it has sort of died down. Like, I think it seems like a bummer at first, and then you're like, okay, now I can actually, like, be productive and get stuff done instead of, like, like, it'll be hard at times, and stuff is hard at times, so yeah.
I like that explanation. Anyone else? Any? Ellen? Nothing? Okay. Great. Legislative update is just the other piece on there. You know, there are kind of a couple of rumblings right now. One of them is around the independent schools. As you know, there are only 18 that have come out on the list from the Agency of Ed who are able to receive funds under the new conditions. Students who are already there or grandfathered there, it's really impacting students who are able to go right now. There are rumblings of legal action among the independent school network, you know, thinking that really, particularly the 25% public school Vermont requirement is onerous, you know, as well as the rest of it, you know, in that sense. So there's some activity there, and I was able to, Matt and I actually both watched the second redistricting task force meeting, and I think, you know, the general sentiment is that it will be helpful when they have a facilitator. They don't have a facilitator right now, and they are, you know, just kind of trying to figure out how do they approach this task, which, you know, many have said takes a lot more time than the time that they have to do that. Some memorable quotes, I think, you know, Scott Beck was clear in saying that the legislature will obviously do the choosing, you know, that really this task force's job is to prepare some things. You know, Rebecca Holcombe, she's bringing her experience to the table, I think, and suggesting that this type of a process has a lot of different layers, and, you know, when you think you solve for one thing, actually, you've created a challenge on another end. And so she's kind of more familiar, given that her position as former secretary, you know, gives her kind of an understanding more from an operational standpoint what that looks like. So she brings some of those pieces. You know, they had a discussion at this last meeting about bringing some maps to try a set of criteria against, you know, and think about that. So that became a hot potato issue in that, well, maybe we don't want to draw maps before we have information, or maybe we just want to start with some maps and then get the information. There's a general understanding that the AOE is not in a position to provide information that is timely and helpful at the moment. So kind of a little bit of a confusion about how to properly get that in such a short period of time. So, you know, I think where they're going for the next meeting is they're bringing some maps that are maybe typical, like, you know, VSBA regions or counties, you know, something that someone else has already suggested, and trying to run those through some of the filters that they have already established. And I think it's a bit of a quandary as to what good would look like or feel like, and how to attend to all of the requirements in the same map. So we were, a number of us locally were invited by legislators to have conversations about what's important to, could they pass along any messages, you know, from us that are useful? And, you know, I think we And, you know, I think we solidly gave them two, one of which is, you know, real information is absolutely essential, and so, you know, task force members should be reaching out to those of us who are on the ground and can provide correct information. So that way considerations are on, you know, what's real, as opposed to, AOE often will send out, you know, 2022, '23 data or information, which obviously now feels like a different era in some levels. So we passed that along. And the other one was that it's really important to make sure we're understanding how much of the foundation formula is coming into the new districts with various configurations. So there's a lot of discussion about the equalization of the tax maps, and virtually no discussion about the way the formula can adjust how much money can come into a district. If you, for example, take in Addison County, the four districts that are wholly contained versus the county itself, you know, what does that mean in terms of the dollars that are arriving and into a district, and the opportunities that could be created through those dollars? So we, I think, together passed along those two messages, that's really important. And we've agreed to just continue to dialogue with our local legislators to ensure that, you know, if there are things that are coming up, that we're able to participate, you know, well in the discussion on behalf of our kids. Our, you know, public position as a district at this point is that we don't have an opinion on district maps until we fully understand the implications on our students, which, you know, we don't have any information to suggest at this point. And once we have more of a complete package of something, then we could give perhaps a sense of impact or what that might look like. But until that time, we have no position on whether this map or that map or any other map is a better map or not, so that's kind of where we are.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Baker? Steve?
Have you had a chance to review any of the public comments that have been submitted to the redistricting task force from either supervisory unions or school districts? On a quick count, it looks like eight school districts and five supervisory unions have submitted public comments already. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at those, if there's any value for us as a board having conversations about doing that?
So I've looked at some of them, you know, and also the Champlain Valley Superintendent's Association met last, not this past Friday, but the Friday before. And we, you know, had some discussion as well, just in terms of the various conversations that are happening, you know, at the board levels. And I think, you know, the thing that's maybe most compelling about some of those testimonies are when people are able to bring to light that there are intricacies in regions that are blushed over by political discourse. And those intricacies make a difference in kids' experiences. And, you know, some others that are really focused on where is the opportunity exactly? That's not something that we are either quantifying or come to an agreed-upon understanding about, and therefore, it feels vague and not real, and not the purpose, which I think there's some pushback in that testimony around. So those are two examples of where I think that's well-received. I do think that, just listening to the committee, there are committee members who have good experience in Vermont and who are taking this very seriously, and who have voices of influence. And so I think well-thought-out testimony would be well-received by those folks. So I would encourage the board, if you are of common mind, to think about that. Yeah, the AOE is proceeding as though this transition is going to be in place, and they are encouraging stabilizing actions that feel sometimes like a little bit of advanced compliance. And so we are, as a group of superintendents, being cautious about those and just being mindful about, you know, steps that we take and ways that we engage in this process before it's had a chance to play out in the public specter, which is important. Ellen, did you have your hand up? Oh, yes, you do, sorry. Ellen, and then Mary Heather.
I did. Wendy, in your email, you mentioned that this group is going to be bringing in a facilitator, which might help speed things along. Had that always been the plan, or was that something that they came to realize that they needed?
My understanding is that was always the plan. It was just a little bit difficult to pull somebody in under contract. And I'm not sure if their intent, or the hope is that it will speed it along, but just add actual clarity in a process to what they're talking about, because they're kind of bouncing around among each other right now without one, understandably, and so it brings some structure to the discussion.
Mary Heather?
Yeah, I guess I have two questions. I guess first, I would, I'm wondering if you can say a little bit more about, you mentioned the AOC is proceeding as though, you know, this is happening, and they're encouraging stabilizing action, and, you know, it's kind of being viewed as sort of pre-complished. Can you speak a little bit more about that, what that means?
I think, you know, the AOE's expectation is that the bill will move ahead in its entirety. And in order to do that, the legislative session has to agree upon new districts. And so to begin to do some of the work that they're talking about prior to that happening, it's when those types of requests come in that feel, you know, strange. For example, you know, there's a document that's recently released by their new chief academic officer around statewide graduation standards that sets in motion a whole process, you know, as if we're starting from the beginning and determining what that might look like across the state, and asking for a fair amount of engagement on the part of school districts, and so on and so forth. Which, you know, there's nothing wrong with that kind of conversation. The timing of things is lined up with the assumption that all of this will be sorted out. There are a number of other things that kind of fall along those lines. And so they are, you know, trying to sort of build reporting systems in such a manner that it would allow for larger districts. The beta testing that they're doing relative to the school district quality standards, that one of the pieces of rationale that the secretary shared is that that will enable them to determine how best to provide technical assistance to the new districts once the new districts are in place, things like that, you know, where, I mean, you know, it's not that there are kernels of good work in any of these. It's just feeling like, you know, we need to begin to wait and see how this gels together before we are doing advanced compliance in some of these areas, and dedicating the time of our staff to do that. So we're watching that carefully. And the Superintendent's Association meets with the secretary monthly, and will review these things, you know, during that meeting.
And I guess I did have another thing, just, you had also mentioned, you know, obviously, ACSD doesn't really have an opinion until we have more concrete information. And you mentioned the degree to which the foundation formula will impact, you know, whether, particularly around how a district might be configured, whether it's like Bull County, or if you're looking at, I guess I sort of lost the thread there, and I'm wondering if you could help me pick it up so I can record it a little better. So can you just be a little more specific on what you were talking about there, so I can fix my notes?
I can give you, I can give you maybe a little bit of a clearer hypothetical. And then, you know, Matt actually made a nice quadrant drawing, you know, that was helpful, as you can imagine. You know, I think that, you know, there's a scarcity weight, right, in the foundation formula. So, you know, if a district includes towns like Hancock or Granville that don't have a high population versus only Middlebury, Vergenza, Bristol, right, you know, then that weight may come in differently, you know, even though the students from Hancock and Granville and Rochester, many of whom already come over here to educate. So it's just making sure we're understanding how the population, included the weighted ADM within each district, is being considered and thought about as these districts are being configured. And I, you know, there's, I mean, you can take whatever position you like as a board. On behalf of the operations, we are not taking a position, and we're asked often what we think should happen until we really understand a full schedule of what the implications to the kids are. There's a lot more conversations about the implications to taxpayers in one model or another. But obviously, you know, we're in the business of providing learning opportunities for kids, and so we want to make sure that we're understanding the impacts of that. Do you have your quadrant handy, Matt?
I have it in here. It was basically like the relationship between property wealth that a town owns and their historical support or lack of support for school budgets, and the potential to land in one of the four quadrants as a result of the new district. So you could be property-rich and have historically-supported education, and see taxes as a result maybe stay close to the same, or property-rich and historically-suppressed school budgets, and see taxes increase because you're not going to be able to suppress locally anymore. You could be property-poor and historically have been pro-school budget, and see your taxes come down as a result of getting more, while also getting more for your school. And be property-poor, historically-suppressed, and get more, pay more. So it's this failing of equalization across from town to town. You know, we know that we've always used CLA within our district to accommodate all of the different, each town's individual property wealth relative to the ACSD budget, but this is going to have to happen with the whole state all at once. And so there's a lot of what-ifs in any scenario, and it's really hard to unpack what each town's impact might be as a result of scenario one, scenario two, scenario three. It ties to what the value of the homes are, it ties to what the historical stance on school budgets has been, and it ties to where the new district is drawn, and what the new people counts inside are, those lines. So a lot of different variables to look at.
We also, I think the superintendents also, you know, in Champlain Valley, provided, you know, a message to the redistricting task force members who were present in the conversation that cautioned them to not to superimpose today's school building usage throughout the state with whatever the school building usage might be July 1st of 2029. Because there are a lot of districts across the state that are thinking carefully about how to utilize school buildings well, particularly as enrollment goes down, how to build strong classrooms, and how to work that out. So I, you know, the idea that the rationale for creating a district based on our current footprint that will take place when the footprint is actually quite different potentially in many districts across the state who are having these conversations is just, was just one of those operational details that we encouraged the committee to be aware of as it's doing its thinking.
It's human nature to, in asking yourself, do I like this or not, make a comparison, right? Is it better, is it worse? And that question is really hard to answer with so many moving parts, and you're supposed to somehow place it all in the context of what the future would be, and compare the future to now in a meaningful way, and it gets so complicated to do.
So we will continue to, you know, have a presence in those redistricting meetings, and just continue to follow it. And, you know, and we'll put it on the superintendent's report to allow for time for discussion for the community and for you. And if there's something specific that you would like us to research or be on top of between meetings, we would be happy to do that. You could send me an email about that, and we'll make sure to cover the information.
Are there any other questions around any of the reports for Dr. Baker? I've seen some pondering looks by some board members, so I'm not sure if they're coming up with questions, or they're going to go away and send an email. So I wait a few more minutes. Mary Heather?
I'm also curious about what the conversations around special education funding have been, and what kind of conversations you've been hearing from other principals, board members, or superintendents?
Relative to the redistricting task force, there's, I have heard nothing. There's been no conversation. There's so far really been very little conversation about any dollars that would be arriving to districts and being used, you know, in order to pull together opportunities that may not be there before, which was part of the intent in the legislation. So we have not heard that. Perhaps it's too early in the process, or that just might be something that's, you know, feels beyond the scope of the committee, but we've not heard that yet. We have heard that the AOE is working and is about to unveil their strategic plan for special education. So we'll look forward to.
Hearing that.
Hearing about that.
Thanks. Anyone else? Steve?
It's not so much of a question, it's more of a statement. You've probably seen the look on my face as I'm trying to organize my thoughts. But I think I just inherently have questions when educational decisions are being made based on the number of people that are organized in different units. And I think that just, I have a lot of questions when that's kind of the start of a process. I'm not a professional educator. But it seems to me, from what I've learned on this board, is that if you're going to make good educational decisions, you need to have those kind of built into the base. And I just, I just have a lot of questions about this whole process.
So far, the only question that we've been directly asked is, what is the usage of each of our buildings? Percent usage? Which, you know, well, how do you count that? You know, right, there are about three ways you could answer that.
That's a rather weird question.
So, you know, I think that's something that is, you know, instructive.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your leadership in navigating this. It's not an easy one.
Alright, so I don't see any other hands raised, and we shall move on. So now we are at the point where we will do the report of the board. We'll start with Communications and Engagement Committee. They were quite chattery a few minutes ago, so.
So Communications and Engagement Committee, our big kind of project right now is we're working on instituting school board town halls in this coming school year. The idea is that once a month, we are at one of the district towns to provide an opportunity for conversation with the public. I brought our agreed-upon purpose, I meant to share this with you a while ago and didn't, so. School board town halls are opportunities for the board and the public to come together for an open and informal conversation. We will share information, ask and answer questions, and gather feedback in order to deepen connections between our communities and the board. Community members from all ACSD towns are welcome to attend these in-person meetings. So our first one is hopefully September with Bridgeport. Ron is our committee contact person setting that up. Looks like we may be shooting for the 5th Monday in September, but.
Is it the 5th Monday?
The 5th Monday, but exact day and time, still TBD. We're getting there.
Still TBD, but that's the 29th, if that happens.
Yes. If that, yes, if that is where we settle, that's where we'll be. As I said, this is something that our committee is very excited about, and we are really committed to making it a success, and we're learning a lot as we march through the process of getting this up and running. So, uh, that's kind of the big thing. We enjoyed, um, our retreat, our board retreat, and has added some depth to our, our committee conversations.
Great. Any quick questions for the.
Yes, please.
I'm curious, um, how you guys are envisioning involving, you know, board member signups so that you.
Yeah.
Spread the effort across.
Yeah.
Others and not just on the committee.
So there are a couple kind of prongs to answer that. One is that we intentionally are taking this on as a committee project so that it does have a consistent base and a, a set group of board members were committed to making it happen. That being said, all of our chatter beforehand was realizing like, oh yeah, we talked about only one or two of us being at each. So yes, there's a little bit of massaging still. So that's, that's kind of the first part is that we fully intend to have someone from Communications and Engagement at each meeting, um, as the official representative. In addition to that, uh, we will, once dates and times are set out, I do believe we'll be contacting the towns, the board person who is from that town to especially say like, hey, if you want to come interact with your peeps, this is a good time to be there. And working, uh, through these kind of committee updates, if your committee has a specific topic that you are interested in getting community feedback from, please reach out to me as the, the chair of the committee so that we can work out the best way to make that happen. Yeah?
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Ron, did I cover everything?
You did.
Okay.
All right. Jason, Finance Committee.
Uh, Finance Committee has not yet met. Uh, will meet in September to kick off the fiscal year 2027 budget.
Thank you. Facilities?
Facilities Committee has met many times this summer. Moving the capital investment planning process forward. And we will hopefully have something, um, for the board to look at, work through across this A and B next month.
Great. Thank you. Jamie, Policy Committee.
Yep. We have, as you see in your packet, a bunch of policies here that we've been working on. We're trying a new tack and that is to update as many of our policies we can that are, that we deem easy to do, easy to update in a, in a short amount of time. So, um, I put a little note in our packet materials explaining the process we went through to do this. And I hope you had a chance to review the policies for the most part beforehand. The, the short version of this is that, um, none, none of the policies we are suggesting, none of the updates we're suggesting substantially change our district operating behavior, protocol, or ideas in any real substantial way. Where they do, we think it's in a positive direction anyway. We, we've dealt with a lot of this with Wendy. And, um, so, uh, it was recommended to us that we off, that we make a motion to approve the policies as a slate, um, or to, what's the right word, Suzanne?
So you asked the board to approve the slate of policies for the first reading and then.
First reading, right. And then the next, and then at the following board meeting, we would officially adopt them.
Correct.
So I guess I'll do that and then I'll, maybe we can talk about it, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the policies listed in the packet as they have been edited and updated by Policy Committee.
So there's a motion to approve the policies in our packet for first reading?
For first reading.
Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Laura has seconded. Is there any conversation, discussion, questions around the policies? Steve?
I have a couple of general policy questions. So if those are not new policies, the ones, uh, like for example, A7, looks like it is a policy that was pulled out of our policy manual.
That's correct.
And that's what I'm used to seeing. The other ones are, uh, especially the ones that have the disclaimers and such at the beginning, those look like they are either new policies or that they've been heavily modified by the VSBA and therefore you pulled them whole cloth out of that.
Right, so let me explain. So you're correct of the first policy we have on our website currently, we decided that there needed to be no changes to it, but basically the date is out of date. So that will be being changed, for example.
Right.
Every other policy, as you said, has this red text box in the beginning. All that is just text from the VSBA noting, it's like, I don't know what you would call it. What's the right word for that?
Yeah, they're, they're references for, um, like disclaimers and all that sort of thing about.
Yeah.
VSBA's responsibility for those particular policies.
Exactly. So, so they're not new. Like we have a work-study students policy and we have a tobacco prohibition policy. We already have these. These are just, we're just trying to make them updated with the versions that are most recently edited by the VSBA and have come under legal review if they require it.
So the observation that I would make on that is that, um, the policies for first read are supposed to be submitted as they would be adopted. And, um, I, I think that those, the adoption notes, box, um, the things underneath like it says required, many of those artifacts from the VSBA would need to be removed before we, um, like disclaimer at the bottom, "This model policy has been prepared." That should not be in our policy.
Really? For first read?
Yes. Uh, because the idea is that you're presenting it to the public as it will appear as a policy.
Yep.
And therefore, if you make any kind of editing, um, then there's, there's a problem because what you're passing later looks different from what you are passing the first time. And, and I don't know how, I mean, I know it sounds pedantic, but we've had people come in and say, "This isn't the policy that you approved," and, and that sort of thing. And the other confusion, especially around the words like required and recommended, those can, those have caused confusions about, um, well, this is a recommended policy, so you don't have to follow it. All of the policies that we're adopting are intended to be followed.
Right.
Um, the required and recommended, those are just from the VSBA's notation. To have them in here in first read could be seen as, um, you know, that, that, that it causes confusion. And I'm not, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to cast stones here. I've actually run across this in, um, in the policy stuff that I've done at Hanford. And people have raised those objections. So just bringing it to you, um, for your consideration.
Yep.
May I, may I make a comment? Sorry, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave my board chair seat aside. And, um, so a suggestion is we could approve them with the adjustments that when they come back for final approval, that they look like our policies that are on the books. In our regular format. So that we could move to approve them as a first read stating that we want them to come back for. We could either say it's a final read or we could say it's just a one more first read if everyone wants to see them in that final format. But, um, it's a formatting piece. It is true, we have typically always seen them as they would show up in the policy manual for first read. But, um, I think that if the board so chose, they could move to approve with the caveat that when they show back up for final read, that they are in our final format as they would show up in the book. I'll put my chair hat back on. Steve?
Yeah, I'm looking at the note that I believe Jamie included on page 14 of our meeting materials. And, um, I can appreciate the thoughtful way this was laid out with the red text indicating the updated language from new model policies that we're recommending for adoption. And then the black text represents language from existing policies. I, I suspect we probably would have had this conversation in reverse order, wondering what language was removed if it was not there. And knowing that in that little letter that is included, it also says that some of these policies are out of date by more than three years. I would be in favor of moving forward as this is written, having everyone review it. And then when we get the opportunity to finally fully adopt it, they need to be finalized for. I can appreciate the way this was put together and brought to us with that existing language.
Can I just, I'll, I'll just say, we, so I understand your point, Steve. We did this last year, actually. The first time we came back in the summer, we approved, I think it was five policies with red lines. And, um, and that seemed to be a way to show the board members who were not on the committee what changes we were proposing. And, um, that's the only reason I did it that way. Obviously, uh, you know, I will work on for the, you know, we have, when we, when we adopt these, we have to take all the red stuff out and add in ACSD back where it says supervised. All, all that stuff will happen. But we have done this a couple of times last year. And, um, it was just a way for people to see, uh, what, you know, sort of a show your work kind of thing. That's the only, that's the only reason. And I'm happy to bring clean, totally updated policies to the, for the next packet. I might have some plans on it anyway.
I have a clarification on C4. If it's, um.
What is that?
If it's time to do that, it's English learners.
Oh, yeah.
You may have heard some rumblings that the U.S. Department of Education has, is revoking guidance that suggests that, um, English learners have a right to equitable access to, um, educational opportunities. This policy obviously doubles down on the fact that they do have that right. And, and I, and I just wanted to assure you that, um, that the legal references that you see in the bottom of, of that, the backside of C4 there, you know, are the appropriate legal references that, that do require us to do that, regardless of what the U.S. Department of Education is, um, suggesting. So, um, so this, this, this policy is what is legally required of us and what we will be doing regardless of what further commentary comes to the contrary from the U.S. Department of Education.
That's a great clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve?
There's one slightly pedantic correction on the last one about the security cameras.
Yep.
Um, uh, number 10 says, "For districts using cloud-based security surveillance." I, I think we are either a district that does that or doesn't do that. I don't think it's necessary for us to say for districts using.
Where are you, Steve?
Uh, number 10. On the, on the, um, it's the F.
The last.
Twenty-six, the last one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I, I think that may be language, you know, recommended language from VSBA. And I don't know the answer to that question. Do we use cloud-based?
We do.
We do. And so it should be more definitive that this is how we are going to do it rather than for districts that use this. Do you see what I mean?
I, I might suggest, uh, that, that resist that clarification because we do it right now. That doesn't mean that 30 days from now, the cloud-based situation will come to a screeching halt and we will need to do something else. You know, and this kind of allows, allows a little bit of leeway there.
Could you say if the district instead of for districts?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Steve?
I do believe in the Facilities Committee and Jason or Mary Heather could correct me if I'm wrong, but we did hear from Bruce just about some changes that were made to some of the security camera infrastructure. I'm not sure, um, whether that was on the cloud or not, but I think having some flexibility there, knowing that there may need to be business by business or building by building decisions. And we are all subject to Vermont's kind of varying connectivity we have per se. And so, um, I, I would be in favor of a bit more flexibility there. I do hear the point that's raised, but, uh, so I think keeping some flexibility might be good.
Mary Heather, do you have a question or were you just?
I did have a question, actually, because I remember the last time we reviewed this policy, that section that is being highlighted on that page, number eight.
Yep.
Regarding the, the amount of time that we have to maintain.
Right.
The recording. And I don't remember what it was before, but there was some question about whether or not there was sufficient.
Storage.
Storage for that. And I just want to make sure that what we're putting in policy is supported by what is operationally.
Right. So, uh, I guess, Wendy, you should take it, but my, but I'll just say around the, I think number, the next statement, where it says, "District keeps a log of any non-administrative persons." I think, uh, the, these two yellow parts are connected, correct? Because the, the storage space is related to the amount of logs that we would keep and that non-administrative persons kind of limit that.
Well, uh, sort of. So the, the yellow in the bottom, number nine, is, is that we don't have to keep a log of administrative persons that are reviewing these because they view them all day long, all the time. And so that seemed prohibitive. So if we have non-administrative persons such as, uh, teachers or, or attorneys or other folks that are reviewing these, these records, then, then we could certainly log that. And that, that's why that is, is yellowed out. And "Security recording shall be maintained for at least 30 days." That's, that's pretty standard, after which time it can be purged. Our, um, our, um, I mean, we, we do the bottom. We retain, we download and retain, you know, all, all recordings that are part of any disciplinary proceeding. If, if a recording has been utilized to, to, um, uh, facilitate a consequence for a student or a group of students, then, then we keep that. You know, it's, unless, Matt, you have different intel, the 30 days is, is fairly standard and is consistent with, with what our subscription is upheld for some time.
I was gonna say, it's contractual for us at this point, like our subscription.
Within our subscription.
Within, yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments or concerns on the policies? Jason?
Uh, I have a question about the prohibition of tobacco policy. It seems extremely focused on tobacco. And I'm wondering if it should also include things like vaping and other things that may not be tobacco specific, but you don't want to permit on school.
Well, yep, I, I'd use, that's a great point. Oh, I see. I mean, we also have a policy alcohol and drugs. That's right below it. But you're saying that, uh, maybe there's a reason to.
You want to cover non-nicotine based smoking?
Right, I don't know. I don't even, I don't know anything about that, so I don't know. I mean, I just, I don't know. Is that the same thing? I don't know.
I would say you probably want to cover it. We probably want to cover it because that's.
What is that?
What?
So maybe if those pens, they look like a pen that people can smoke that can also blow up in their faces.
It's not tobacco, it's nicotine, so it'd be different. It wouldn't fall under tobacco products.
Would it fall under the drugs laws? I, I feel like.
No, because it would be legal for a group of.
Okay.
Students of a certain age.
Does it fall under regulated substance?
I think so, yes.
Because that's in the alcohol and drug policy.
Yes, yeah.
Any illegal drug regulated substance or alcohol?
Yes, yeah.
So as long as there are age limits imposed upon it, then that would fall under the regulated substance.
I, I think it's okay for now, but I, I understand the point. And I, and I think, you know, it's something that, that we could certainly, um, you know, we could ask our partners about who are thinking about this. I don't know the policy that has taken that into consideration well, you know? So as not to create other loopholes that you can move through, but, but I think it's something that we can keep an eye on for policy language, you know, throughout this year that we might want to add, you know, subsequently. But right now, they, it is, it is considered a, an illegal substance for students, for sure, so.
Any other?
I mean, it is kind of covered under the definitions part.
Yeah.
Where it says tobacco product. And it ties it to Vermont statute. So, um, if the state changes, then this automatically changes. So I think you're pretty much covered.
I like that angle too.
Jason? Jason?
Sorry, you're reading.
On page 46, this is the Crystal Management and Financial Accounting one. I remember five are highlighted, making inventory of supplies, materials that are supposed to be distributed to the board only. Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, we would like to not do that. We would like that to come out. To my knowledge, no one is counting the pens and chalk and markers at this moment and we would like to not have to dedicate staff to doing that. So, so that's, that's highlighted so that we just take that right out.
That's not something that's ever been presented to the board, ever.
We're not doing it at all now and I don't think we'd want to dedicate time to doing that. Yeah.
I think I'm glad you're not doing it.
Is there any other comments, questions, or concerns before we call the question? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion of moving the set policies that are in our packet for first reading and they will come back for a final reading in final Addison Central's form.
Yes.
Yep. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's passed. We'll move on to Negotiations Committee, Steve Borzak.
Traditionally Negotiations has very little to, to report because we can't really talk about what we're talking about in negotiation. But we have, we have been meeting and we have been studying the contract and that's about all I can say at this point. We have not been contacted yet. So to say that we are meeting does not mean that we are negotiating at this point, so.
Yes, you could say we're learning.
Yeah, we're studying, so.
Student outcomes, Ellen?
Student outcomes committee has not met over the summer, so we're meeting in September on the 24th.
Great, thank you. Career Center, Steve and Laura?
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot?
We've met once last week and we've got some improvements to equipment that happened over the summer. New floor in the construction lab. Two new buses coming and in really good shape, I think, for the coming school year. So everybody's excited.
Yeah, the only thing that has been expressed in those meetings is a little bit of concern about enrollment volatility because one school as part of the district has had some extensive dropouts from the program through dropping out. And so one of the strategies that was employed this year was, last year, teaching assistants were hired that ended up not being needed, which was a huge drain on the budget. So this year, only one was hired and until final enrollment numbers pan out, we will see, there may be additional staff hiring after that. But again, burned once, don't want to get burned again. And the other thing is you're exploring duplicated efforts. So there are things that the Career Center offers that are not supposed to be offered by descending schools and all three of the descending schools currently have some, some conflicts in those areas, some more than others. But, so those are, those are things that should probably be at the attention level of this board as well. I, I know Wendy, that you're aware of both of those issues, but you know, that it's, it's definitely something that's of concern over at the Career Center, so.
Thank you. Addison Central CPAC, Mary Heather, do you want to take that?
Sure. So CPAC has not met over the summer, but Jen Thompson and Mary Slizar reached out to myself, Suzanne, and Dr. Baker about arranging a meeting so that we can talk about how best to work together as a CPAC and as the district and kind of chart a, a meeting rhythm, you know, what, what would work best for CPAC parents and, you know, making sure that we're using everyone's limited time wisely. So that meeting is scheduled for September 8th. I believe it's right before a board meeting, is that right? Or no, I guess it's a
No, it's right before negotiations.
Yes, it's right before another meeting. Anyway, it's been squeezed in, so we're going to have a meeting to sort of discuss, kind of try to map out the year. And then I'm sure CPAC will launch with its board and, you know, the rest of its folks and look forward to welcoming Nellie and other folks.
Sonia will also be supporting that group from an inclusion standpoint particularly.
Great, great. It's a good group, really a good group of involved parents, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
The VSBA update, we have regional meetings coming the end of September where my term is up for reelection and I'm re-running. We met as a Resolutions Committee and thank you for bringing up the vaping issue because we have a resolution that does address the, or within the resolution that will come forward to the VSBA board members and global members is a resolution around vaping. So there was a lot of conversation around that and people were like, well, isn't it covered by another policy? So everyone did the same thing we did. They all looked through policies and they're like, we don't find the word vaping. So they have a resolution around that. This year, the VSBA conference typically held in Lake Maury will not be held in Lake Maury, it will be held in Burlington.
Yay!
I believe it is over Halloween.
Close. 29th and 30th.
There you go, thank you. And so they'd love to have as many board members there. They always set a bar and like, they're like, well, we'd love to have 100 board members there. And then when they get to 100, then they're like, well, we'd love to have 150 there. I think this year they're shooting for at least 200 board members. So if anybody can attend or can get out of work and make it, it's a wonderful opportunity. Last year, they had some absolutely fantastic student performances. Those kids with the robots
Yeah, that was pretty
were, I was like, whoa. Especially when they told us how young they were when they started. It was unbelievable. So that is what's going on with the VSBA. And as Dr. Baker says, that they are following very closely everything that's going on in the state. We get emails and ask for input. We send input, they send letters or they go in person and, you know, tell them just what the state thinks through their mouth. So that's what I have for an update there. Steve?
If we are interested in going, what would be the mechanism for us to request? Because I know that you sign up through the district that's
You actually have to go onto the VSBA website and register yourself because you have to pick sessions that you, that you want to go to in that sense. But, but then, you know, you can, Darcy will arrange your accommodations and things like that. Because many people choose to stay overnight if that's what you need, so. I would probably do it a two-pronged way, Steve. I would do your registration and at the same time send Darcy the email so that she knows the true voting and doesn't accidentally miss, and then you end up with bail. That would not be fun. That's the end of our committees, folks. So Ron just looked like, wow! So we will now move into our second public comment period. Do we have any public in the room that would like to have any comments or thoughts for the board? Seeing no hands raised, do we have anybody online, Jason, that would like to make a comment to the board?
Yeah, there's a few public online. I don't see anybody with their Zoom hand raised.
Okay. So no public comment in either the room or online. I would like to ask for someone to take a stab at doing the board reflections.
So not necessarily reflection on, on this meeting, but going back to our policy conversation, I would like clarification on first reads, second reads, and what the specific requirements of those are. So I don't know what, if that's talking to our lawyer, if that's talking to VSBA, but it'd be great to have some official clarification on that. Looking at Vermont Legislature statute, it says, "A school board shall give public notice of its intent to adopt a board policy stating the substance of the proposed policy at least 10 days prior to its adoption." So from that, I think what we've presented today counts as a first read.
Yes.
Very much communicates the substance of the policies that we would be passing more than 10 days from now. But like I said, if we could get the official word on
I will reach out and ask VSBA tomorrow.
Perfect.
I think that is the official word, though.
Yeah, like
But I, I think as far as, so I think
As long as it's substance, then I think
The substance, I think, is just more about the presentation, how it looks. So I will ask and I will get the word back.
Thank you.
Jamie?
I just have one board reflection and that is that I thought the back-to-school meeting in the high school was completely amazing. I go to a lot of meetings that are not that. This was completely incredible. I was like totally blown away. I couldn't believe it. How the speaker, I mean, Wilmer was like incredible. I thought Wendy did an amazing job facilitating the whole thing. The awards were awesome. Nava and, is it Taryn?
Taryn, yeah.
Taryn, we're awesome. I don't know, it was just like a really great start to everything. It made me think why my workplace actually doesn't do something like that. And so just kudos to those of you who worked on that organizing, et cetera.
Yeah, I second that. That was the highlight of my week, for sure.
It was really fun to attend, so thank you for, for extending the invitation and for everyone who was involved in the background of that. That was awesome. Appreciate it.
Glad everyone was able to attend. I was at work. Steve?
I just wanted to say during our policy conversation, Wendy, I really appreciated you explaining some of the legal backdrop for some of those policies and specifically, you know, identifying this is the reason why those policies are there and reminding us of that, so thank you.
Any other reflections? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second? All in favor of adjourned, which we don't have to do?
Aye.